We're live, Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the roll call. Jen Alexander?
Here.
Abby Gill Miller?
Here.
Rob Hudson?
Here.
Paul Marcosi?
Here.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I didn't see the adjustments to the agenda.
Mrs. Thomas, for the board's consideration, I have one recommended adjustment to the agenda. We'd like to add the following item, J to J new business, and move J four and J five to J five and J six respectively. That would be discussion and consideration of an amendment to the 2019-2020 Ellsworth School Department calendar.
I'll make a motion to the adjustment to the agenda recommended by the superintendent.
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing none. Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abby Miller?
Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Marcosi?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's five oh.
Thank you.
Item D, approval of minutes for the May 26, 2020 special school board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 26, 2020 special special board meeting as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abby Miller?
Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Marcosi?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Five oh. Item E, communication correspondence.
Yes, Mrs. Thomas, I do have one letter of resignation, which I will address in my report.
Thank you. Item F, public participation. The public may use the question and the answer through Zoom or may send an email to the Ellsworth School Board Vice Chair, Our policy, B E D H. We ask that all those asking questions or making comments identify themselves. All speakers are to address the chair and they are, or they may make direct questions or comments to a particular school board member or superintendent only with the approval of the chair. Members of the public may speak on any subject directly related to the operations of the schools, except for personnel or complaints concerning specific employees or students. Personnel matters or complaints concerning students or staff issues will not be considered in a public meeting and will be referred through established policies and procedures. In order to make effective use of meeting time, the board discourages duplication or repetition of comments to the board. We ask that you limit the number of questions or comments you make to three. Thank you. Item G, administrative board reports. We're going to start with you, Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. Good evening. You have my report. I first like to recognize Colby Hamilton, who was chosen as the choice speaker for the class of 2020, and he will be speaking at graduation. And then the rest of the report is really just the senior class awards. But I also want to thank Mrs. Corson, Mrs. Fellabel, their co-presidents for that. And Trudy Montigny was co-president, along with Lucas Jordan. Emma Whitney was vice president. Colby Hamilton, treacherous. And Marissa Havy, secretary. They all did a great job this year and through the four years with fundraising and things like that, and really leading their class. As far as this week goes, we have the processional tomorrow at six o'clock. Lineup at TJ Maxx parking lot is at 5:30. And then at eight o'clock tomorrow night through our Facebook page will be class night. And then Friday, we have our in-person graduation that starts at 4:30 right at the high school outside. And that is followed by the recorded virtual graduation, which is 8:30 Friday night. And that will be on our Facebook page also. So a big week for our seniors and graduation is here and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. Ms. Gabanelli?
Good evening. Thank you very much. It's nice to see you all this evening. A couple of things that I want to talk about this evening. First of all, we concluded our classes with our students on June 5th. And I'm pleased to say that our students and staff approached remote learning with not only a commitment to the learning, but a commitment to connection. Faculty and staff continuously went above and beyond to ensure that students had what they needed, whether it be technology, books, someone to talk to, ensuring that all the needs were met. So I'm really proud of our faculty and staff for the way that they approached that. And I'm also proud of our, very proud of our students. This may have been the most difficult time we've experienced in education, but I think we rose to the challenge and showed true grit and perseverance, compassion and kindness. And I'm proud to say that we really lived our motto every day. So kindness does start with all of us. And it was really, really a tribute to our faculty, staff, students and families. So I'm very pleased about that. Eighth grade awards and promotion ceremonies took place on June 2nd, 4th and 5th. We had approximately 91 eighth graders participate in the drive-up ceremony over the course of two days. They were greeted by a team of teachers, Mr. Wood and myself. And I really feel like they felt celebrated and honored throughout the whole process. We had a photographer there. We were cheering them on when they drove up, played music. It was lovely to see the smiles on their faces and see their families with them. And they, they really followed the guidelines to a T. We had a lot of people piling out of vehicles, the one vehicle that they were allowed. So it was really great. And I appreciated that so much that parents really stuck to those guidelines. And I think, you know, everyone really pitched in and made this a special time for our eighth graders. So I just want to say congratulations to the EMS eighth grade class of 2020. It was fantastic. And as we wind down the year and we reflect on our triumphs and tribulations of each school year, this year, we've, we've, in particular, we've seen our fair share. An important member of my team is retiring at the end of this year, but I can't let her leave without thanking her for the impact she's had on me and our school. As a new principal, there are always challenges that come along. New learning takes place on a daily basis. Over the past two years, I've had the privilege to learn and grow with one of the best educational leaders I know, Kathy Lewis. She has been my colleague, my friend, my champion and a teacher through it all. Sorry. I'm forever grateful for the time that we've had, we've spent together, the school that we are building, and the meaningful conversations about education and the unwavering support and love she has for students, staff and the Ellsworth School community. Kathy Lewis makes a positive impact wherever she goes. She leads with her heart, compassion and determination to always put kids first. Kathy is an inspiration and her ripple effect reaches far and wide. To know her is a privilege, to love her is a gift that I've been blessed with. Thank you for everything that you've done for the Ellsworth School community and congratulations on your retirement, Kathy. We love you.
Thank you.
One last thank you. Yeah. Sorry. One last thank you to all of the parents for your support and encouragement during this time. I believe it's been a true partnership between home and school. And we applaud the efforts of parents and guardians to facilitate work completion during this time and appreciate all of the communication and feedback. All of that communication and feedback is so helpful to us and is, allows us to thoughtfully plan and implement changes. And I appreciate it all so much. So thank you to the parents and families for all of the work that you've done during this time of remote learning. And again, just congratulations to Kathy Lewis. Thank you so much for all that you do. We love you. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, for your final report, unless you want to come back, we can find a place for you. You know that.
Well, I have to tell you, I told Mr. Higgins, I would come back and work with the custodians because they've done a beautiful job of lining our parking lot in response to concerns that both administration, meaning Erica and I in particular, but also Mr. Higgins and others had regarding the markings on that parking lot. I want to give kudos beyond belief to Chuck Turnbull and Cody and Bruce, those people who went out there in somewhat questionable bug weather and did a beautiful job and all for the safety of our kids. And I would say to you, I usually sort of format my report with climate, curriculum and community. But I want to say, you heard what my colleague Erica had to say about what a wonderful team we have. But I want to expand that to everybody on the administrative team and everybody who works for this school department in terms of it, the purpose of almost everything is safety of those kids and allowing them to have a wonderful childhood that encourages learning and love of learning and lifelong learning and curiosity. And I would say to you that every action in our school department makes an impact on those kids. And we are blessed when we work with people who are capable and quality people who care so much. And that the purpose is almost always completely evident to everyone who's looking. I, I feel like I'm the one who has been blessed in many ways. I thought I was retired and then this superintendent came along and said, please, would you help us? And of course, I would help. But what turns out is what often happens in life. You go for one reason and there are really so many others. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the songs and the music in the Broadway play Wicked. But one of those songs is "Because I Knew You", and said, "Because I knew you, I have been changed for good." And I would tell you that despite the 46 years of being an administrator and a teacher and loving every minute of that, these last two and a half have added more to my whole spectrum of learning and knowing that there are things that we can do that make all the difference. Now, I didn't anticipate the pandemic as a learning curve, but here it is. And what we see then, when, you know, I've said this before, it's easy to be good when it's easy. But when people are challenged with something they haven't met before and find within themselves those strengths with which they can build on because their purpose is so clear, that's when you get a school department who puts forth as much effort, as much passion and as much perseverance as I've seen. It was unexpected. It is unknown. And yet, everything that people are doing says, "We love these kids. We'll do everything that we can," even when we're not exactly sure what that is. And we weren't perfect. Oh my heavens, we had all the frailties of humanity. But what we did have that was clear and consistent was compassion and caring and the energy and perseverance to keep going and to problem solve with creative problem solving wherever we needed to do that. And we didn't do it alone. Not a one of us did this alone, not at any level. And we couldn't have done it without each other. The administrative team was certainly a huge portion of this, but I need to thank the kids because they tried. Those who could did. And what happened was some very unexpected sorts of activities. We had kids who were practicing phys ed skills by balancing balloons, which by the way, was a great idea, unless the balloons went behind you and you tipped over backwards, because I'm not good with the backward somersault thing. But it was amazing. And when kids did some of those activities or substituted their own, which we encouraged and allowed, you found that they had passions you didn't know about, energies and strengths that were amazing. And the parents, the parents deserve some kind of medals. There were those who were able to access what we were doing and support their kids. There were those who made it happen even though they couldn't do it. There were those who begged for forgiveness and we said, "That's not necessary. You're doing the best you can and you're doing all kinds of life skills with your kids. You're doing math, you're doing reading when you're driving in the car. You're figuring out when they're cooking, how to teach measurement and time, because you have to time the oven." But those parents deserve awards for sticking with it and doing what they could. And for those who couldn't manage for whatever reason, please, we have said over and over again, we, there is no need for forgiveness. We understood. People did what they could do. And we're proud of you. It doesn't matter what you were able to do. As we go forward, if it continues to be remote, we'll have to have some new structures because we have to know that kids are learning specific things. And we offer the strategies and the tools to help do that. But we had a couple of parents that I felt, oh my gosh, I wish we could do more and I wish we could do it faster. And God bless April and her IT team. They took on a lot of that and it was amazing. But we don't want anybody to think we weren't trying. If it didn't come out the way you wanted it or we wanted it, we were doing what we knew how to do, what we could do. And we keep trying to do it better because that's what we do when you're an educator. You want it to be better. But I also had a letter from a mom and I'm going to share it. It's not too long, but I want you to hear it. She would have spoken directly tonight. She said, "There's no way I can do it." But she entitled it, "A Day in the Life of a Remote Learning Family." Some of this was on Facebook. Lola has already zoomed with her amazing teacher and finished all her schoolwork. She's sacked out on the couch for a nap. The boys are currently zooming with their rock star language arts teacher, who is masterfully weaving their current class novels into a game of, "Would You Rather?" Beau is upstairs zooming with her beloved language arts and math teachers at the same time. On this day, I move to tears by the efforts that every single one of my kids' teachers are putting forth to reach out and be there in so many ways. I'm grateful to all of you amazing teachers for loving my kids and making this craziness possible. I can't rave enough about all of the teachers and everything they are doing to help this mom survive remote learning. When I say every teacher, I mean the PE teachers, the music teacher, the math, the LA teachers, the social studies, the science, the art, the health, and the faithful librarian, reading a book for my, reading books for my girl. The teachers who make videos to help my kids understand concepts and exchanged memes to lighten their days. The teachers who had a meaningful Zoom, even if my kid was the only one who showed up. And a loving teacher who kept responding to 10 seesaw updates a day. This has been a pretty unbelievable time and the teachers and administrators of the Ellsworth School Department have been exemplary heroes. I have a child in elementary school, one in middle school and two in high school. I want you all, teachers and principals and all staff, to know that your exasperation with new technology and tears of frustration were not wasted on my children. My children learned and grew in many ways because of you during this time of remote learning. Your love came through the glowing screens of Zooms, Google Docs and emails. A different, unexpected kind of bond was formed this year and you will be missed this summer. Words cannot describe what your sacrifices have meant to our family. Thank you so much. And that's what makes this important. I'll go back to, "It's easy to be good when it's easy." But when everybody involved is doing everything they can do, that's what makes it valuable and important and the kids see it. So I just want to say thank you and I have, just because Ms. Erica opened it up, I have a young man who years ago, named Ryan Mitchell, and his mother told me years ago, I could use his name, wrote to me when I thought I was retiring, "May your journey take you in the direction you wish to go as all your memories will be right beside you. And my memories of the Ellsworth School Department will be magnificent and bright and so wonderful as time goes by." So I thank you for everything you do and everything you are. And I've had a very good time. Thank you.
Thank you. You will be very missed.
Thank you.
Kathy, it didn't surprise me that Erica cheered up when she was talking about you. It didn't surprise me that I cheered up as well. And you've been, we've been so fortunate to have you and I feel very fortunate to have gotten to know you. And I look forward to seeing you at the HCTC lunches.
Oh, yeah.
When they resume. So thanks again and enjoy your retirement and try to try to stay retired this time.
It gets easier every time.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And don't forget to leave, save a seat for me at HCTC.
And know where you sit, your friend.
Mrs. Bowles?
Oh, yes. My famous spot, Mrs. Lewis. For God's sakes, I won't, as much as I will miss you, I won't miss this.
Last time, Amy.
Oh, my God. I know. I do, you know, possibly tomorrow morning, Mrs. Lewis, I may have a halftime ed tech opening. You could come meet part-time and then eat lunch every week.
That has possibilities.
I, I think we should. Um, good evening, everyone. First in my report, I want to thank April Clifford for her assistance with our first ever virtual award ceremony. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback that people were really pleased with the way that it went. It certainly has been the most shared and the most commented on posting on Facebook we've ever done with over 4,000 people reached as of yesterday. As a result, we definitely will be exploring live streaming this event in the future because we definitely had more people tune in than we have ever had attend in person. So we will definitely explore that for the future. One positive to take away from us being in a virtual atmosphere was learning that. The evening was wonderful. We gave away the most scholarship money we've ever given away, giving away over $22,000 in scholarships. I remember when I first started, we gave away $500. So it's amazing how much our area businesses believe in career and technical education. And I loved, every student that got one was a different student. Not one student got many. We spread it out across high schools and programs. So that was really special. We inducted a wonderful class into National Technical Honor Society. We inducted new members, honorary members, which were Chris Popper and Brett and Jen Alexander for K&amp;B Automotive. And so congratulations to our honorary members and for all their contributions to career and technical education. So we were thrilled to do that online. So I, again, thank you to April for her help with that event. It was certainly stressful to try to pull that off and do it live. So we are very appreciative of her for doing that. I'm happy to report, we began certification testing this week. We have completed three programs as of today. Kudos to our students. We have very strict guidelines in place for them to follow and they have been fabulous. So appreciative to Michelle Cody and Hope High, who have been there along with our three ed techs, Tara Mason, Erin Morrison and Allison Wilson. They've been there every second, helping and making sure that all the guidelines are followed and that kids are in a comfortable testing atmosphere. So kudos to everyone for that. So we're thrilled that we'll be able to finish our testing next Wednesday. Thursday, I think, is the last day. We give CNA next Wednesday. So we'll have given our certification exams in almost all of our programs by next week. I did get good news today that EMCC is opening up their welding testing site. So we're hoping that some of our welders will be able to possibly get their certification exams in as well. So we'll be in really good shape in terms of our seniors getting the certification exams they need to go on to post-secondary and into the workforce. So we're really thrilled with that. And thank you for your support in allowing us to do that. Finally, like the other administrators have said, just thank you to our students for their commitment to their programs for the remainder of the year. It was not always easy. For our learners, who are very much hands-on learners and want to be in their shops and in their live work settings, to have to transition to their homes and do things virtually, but they did a fantastic job. Staff worked exceptionally hard, as other principals have indicated, to maintain connections with all students across all of our county and with all of our high schools. So I'm very proud of the job that my staff did over this time. And I want to give a special shout out to Liz Connors, who never didn't come to work. She has kept our office open every single day and has worked and taken care of everything in the main office. So I want to give a shout out to her and express my appreciation to her for all she's done for our school during this stressful time. If there's no questions or are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carmen Ramos?
Hi, good evening. It's nice to see you all. Let's see, we have a few things that are normally at this time of year, but those are a little bit different. So for example, our Title One Summer Program will be happening. We are excited. We sent out a survey to all of our family and asked the question whether they would like to still attend school. There, you know, we knew they were going to be disappointed that it was remote learning, but that we have some exciting ideas for it. And whether in return, for two weeks of summer learning, they would like to attend the Y camp. We have still our scholarships for our Title One program thanks to the Ellsworth School Board and the town of Ellsworth. And we do have, a third of our recipients are interested in both doing summer school and camp. And some of our kids would like to do the summer school, but not go to camp. So we're really pleased that we're having such a good chance and we have some people who would still want to stay engaged. As Kathy said, kids, as all of you have said, you know, the kids haven't engaged. They want to be connected to their teachers. We have teachers who want to stay connected to the kids. I have more teachers applying to be part of this program than even in the past. So it's heartwarming to me to see how much people want to keep that connection even after such a challenging few months. So I think that's a real indicator of the investment these families have in our school community. And, you know, it's wonderful to see. So our program will be running from June 22nd to July 3rd. There'll be about an hour, an hour and a half of remote learning with different teachers. It may be alternating teachers each day. We'll be able to have smaller groups because, like I said, we have teachers who are interested in working with smaller groups of kids. And then they'll also be given some time to work on eSpark or some seesaw assignments that they can do when they're able. And so they won't have to be online all the time. They'll be able to pick some other times to work. And we'll help them keep track of that. And we're going to have one of our teachers be in charge of helping them online and connecting with families if they need help dealing with those programs. And then we'll also have some enrichment. We'll have some guest visitors on Fridays for families to enjoy. Forgive me for the sirens in the background. In Tremont, where I live, the eighth grade is graduating right now. And they're having a drive-by celebration down our road. I had a feeling this was going to happen exactly as I was speaking because that's how things happen. And my daughter's outside waving at all of her friends in the eighth grade because she's in seventh grade. So forgive me. Can you hear me still with all this craziness? Yeah, okay. An indication of all the ways that schools are trying to make things exciting for kids. So then the students who will attend the summer school will have the opportunity through scholarships to attend the Y camp at Webb Pond for the month of July. So we're really pleased to be able to support families who need that help. And again, I thank the Ellsworth community for supporting those scholarships. It really is a wonderful incentive for kids to come and continue their learning for some, a little bit of extra time. Our comprehensive needs assessment review is always at this time of year. But given that we're doing some other things right now and trying some, work through some new challenges, it'll be a little bit later. So it was created two years ago and is kind of a roadmap for the goals of our school district. And each year, we review those goals and talk about how the year went. This will be a more interesting conversation, I think. And so I'll be reaching out to our planning team that includes parents and faculty members, you know who you are, and asking if we can have a Zoom meeting and talk about how our year has gone. And I thank them in advance for their hopeful participation and their valuable feedback. This information will be used to help us think about district-wide academic and behavior goals for the coming year based on the successes and challenges that we've had over this very highly unusual last year. We are, within the next week, we'll be sending out surveys to our grade five through 12 students, our educators, and our ESD families to assess the experiences of each group through the last few months of remote learning. We want to not only look at the challenges that they've had in the past, but also ask questions about how we can be supportive as we move forward. I hope you'll all watch out, the families, for these surveys because that's really an opportunity to give us some feedback. There is, they will be anonymous unless you would like us to contact you. And there's a place for you to put in any questions or comments that you have. And we'll be watching those and having whoever you asked us, you know, are interested in communicating with, be able to get back to you. So this is a way for families to give us some feedback about how the year has gone. So please watch for that. We will post that on the website through our Facebook pages. And we'll also send out an email through our phone system to let you know that it is available. Teachers will also have that survey to be able to share with us the successes and challenges of this past year, both before and after our time of remote learning, so that we can help them be supported and set up as much professional development to help them in these new times so that they can get the support they need educationally. And students, grades five through 12, we will have a survey for them that we will get to them before they need to turn in their devices. And we hope that they will do that as well because we have lots of questions. It'll help us think about moving forward and making sure that they feel supported. We do have some exciting news. We, federal funds were granted to us. The Ellsworth School Department applied for and was awarded a $5,000 Maine DOE mini grant for our families and students who have insecure shelter and home situations. This grant will cover needed healthcare, personal supplies and backpacks, and professional development for teachers to better understand the challenges that face students whose living arrangements are not stable. We talked to leaders at all of the schools to think about how we can support our families who are dealing with homelessness and insecurity with their homes. And we're really excited that we received that. There's also an opportunity to apply for a three-year grant to continue the funding that we'll be applying for, that I believe is due in July. Lastly, I too would like to say thank you to Kathy. When I moved here nine years ago, I was new to the state completely as a resident. I had been a visitor and came into the school district and was a curriculum director for the first time after my education career. And Kathy came walking into the School Union 93 office and turned around and says, "It looks like you're doing something interesting." I was writing a board and talking to a CIA team or something. And that's the first thing she said to me, "It looks like you're doing something interesting." And since then, she has been my personal certification mentor and my administration mentor. And I was very sorry to see her go from Surrey. And I thought, I didn't know her well, so I thought that she was really retiring. To which someone who was working there said to me, "I'm not sure that's true. She's had more retirements than anyone I've ever met." And sure enough, she ended up then becoming a principal at Pembentick on the island where we live. And I got to see her in my community. And then when we were looking for a new principal and I was curious about who it would be, Mr. Higgins walked by me and he said, "Don't worry. I think this is someone that you're going to be very pleased about." Because she had been my mentor, so he spoke to her before I was hired. And sure enough, here she was. She was back. So I have had the pleasure of working with her myself. And she has mentored me as an administrator from the get-go because I had never been one before. And I've been so grateful for her wise guidance and words. And her positivity is infectious. And there are many a day that she would say, "How are you?" And I was like, "Well, I'm here." And she says, "Well, that's better than nothing. Let's get, let's start from there and see what we can do." And has always talked to me about working with kids and the joy of it. So it is, it is my joy to have been part of her life in this little piece of time that I lived in Maine. I was so lucky that she, she came back in my life three different times. Who would have guessed? So it's been my pleasure to work with her as well. And I'm going to miss you, Kathy, if you're really leaving. So I'm not convinced.
I promise I won't stalk you anymore.
I've never enjoyed being stalked so much. So I do want to thank her as well for being such a wonderful mentor to me. And I've been grateful to work with her.
Thank you, Rachel. If that's okay. I do have a question for Rachel. So the survey is going out. Can you explain the reason not to include K-4?
Oh, the K-4, the family survey includes, includes questions for families to answer on behalf of their students. We didn't want to, you know, have them worry so much about having online, having to answer them themselves. That they would do it, so the idea would be they would do it in conjunction with their parents.
Okay. Those will be sent out to separately?
Oh, yeah, no, the family surveys will go to all families. The student surveys that are answered separately on their own behalf will be sent out to grades five through 12. But the family surveys include questions for their elementary students. We just thought that it made more sense for families to answer the questions in conjunction with their younger students.
Okay, great. Thank you.
About their experiences.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. Superintendent's report. Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. With regard to my report, just want to start and update everybody on the finalized timeline for budget approval. As many of you know, Governor Mills recently issued an executive order that helped clarify the budget approval process. So much of the approval test is contingent upon what's happening with COVID. Fortunately, in our community, we're able to continue with the regular budget process we've used in the past several years. So what remains is on June 15th, next Monday, city council consideration and approval of the budget that our board approved back on April 28th. This also includes the required public hearing for the FY '21 budget. That will be held in council chambers. And there will be enough room for our finance committee members to attend. So Mrs. Thomas, Mr. Hudson, you'll be welcome to attend and be part of that presentation. And then on July 14th is the budget validation referendum vote. I am not 100% certain of how that is going to be managed, but that is the final step in the process of approving our budget. And I would encourage all of our citizens to please, through whatever means is available to you, please come out and cast your ballot. With regard to our staffing, we did receive one letter of resignation. Teresa Richardson, who's been a special education teacher at EEMS for the last several years, has decided to move on to another opportunity. But would like to thank Teresa for her outstanding service to our students. She's always done a great job. With regard to new and transferring staff, one of the staff members who's listed in my report, we'll be talking about a few minutes later in the agenda. So I won't touch that right now. But we do have two longtime staff members who will be transferring to new positions next year. Lisa Batman, who used to be a special education teacher and has been teaching grade three at EEMS for the past several years, will be transferring to the grade five, six resource room teaching position at EEMS. And Jane Stackpole, who has been a grade seven teacher at EEMS for just a few years, will be transferring to become the new K through eight gifted and talented teacher at EEMS. Shifting on to another piece because we're getting a lot of questions on it would be facility usage, in particular, our outdoor facilities. We do have a discussion item later in the agenda for an update on where we're going with planning for the fall of 2020. But I'd like to briefly discuss the status of summer facility usage for our outdoor facilities. Currently, the outdoor facilities are closed to public use and have been since March. Now, that is with the exception of Delu Stadium, which is actually a city-owned property, and other facilities like some of the ball fields that we were not able to secure. We're not able to secure those and keep people out of them. But as we move forward and the guidance and restrictions have been loosened and the great Maine summer weather has arrived, we're considering on looking at the guidance and how we may begin to reopen some of those facilities for public use, either by private citizens or organizations through our facility usage policy. Philosophically, it's important to know that the school department is of the belief that reopening our facilities will benefit people who use them, not just physically, but also socially and emotionally. And over the past three months, we've all been tied up inside and have not been able to take part, take in the activities that we so much enjoy. But we're looking at how we can do that sooner rather than later. The couple of pieces that we need to address before we're able to do that, however, is that we are working with our insurance carrier to determine the level of liability and exposure for the school department by reopening the currently closed facilities and a user contracts the virus. We're also awaiting guidance from our carrier for, with regard to use of the facilities by the public. Most of the requests I've received thus far have been regarding our tennis courts and the use of the baseball field at Ellsworth High School. I'm in hopes that we'll receive this information over the next week or so so that we can inform the public as to when these facilities will be available for use and under what parameters. I do want to say that I appreciate the patience and understanding of the members of our public as we work through this process so that we can ensure reopening of our facilities in as safe a manner as possible. I would like to take just a couple of minutes to talk about food service. I referenced this at our last meeting. With regard to the two programs we've been operating since March, one would be the breakfast lunch program, which is referred to as the summer school lunch program. The waiver for that program expires as of June 30th. So we will be continuing that program through June 30th. As of this time, we do not expect the waiver to be extended. So Mr. Daley and I are looking at what other options may exist so that we can continue that program. One of the things that I think is a positive with the gradual reopening of our communities, we've seen the numbers of families accessing this program start to diminish. And in fact, Mr. Daley had one family come through this morning who said, "This will be our last time coming through because I'm going back to work." So to me, that's a real positive sign. But there are still some families that we want to make sure that we can serve. Now, the other program that we've been doing is the grocery delivery program. And we have been regularly delivering groceries to over 100 families per week, a week's worth of groceries, since March. We are equipped with enough supplies at this point in time to continue that program also through the end of June. And we're also looking at what options we have to continue that through July and August. One of the options we're looking at is potentially having one delivery in July and one delivery in August to help those families get through to the beginning of the school year. With regard to that, you know, the generosity of our community is unmatched. But if there are people who are still willing to donate and try to help us support that program with supplies of shelf-stable foods, please contact our offices and let us know and we can direct you where to provide the support for that program. I was going to talk about retiring staff members next, but I think I'm going to save that until the end. As far as a conclusion of the 2019-20 school year, as you all know, last Friday was the final formal instructional day for the 2019-20 school year. I'd like to express congratulations to all of our students for their many accomplishments and successes in academic, co- and extracurricular and community-based activities during the school year. As you know, students attending our schools take advantage of a very wide variety of opportunities available to them and achieve and succeed at the highest of levels. I would also like to recognize all Ellsworth School Department staff members for the continued outstanding work with our students. And as I've said many, many times, and it still rings true, we are fortunate to have a staff of so many dedicated people who are dedicated to serving the best interests of the children that we work with. Unlike in other years, 2019-20 was a year completely interrupted by the onset of the COVID-19 virus and a spring full of changes, challenges, and new normals. In addition to my previous comments, I would also like to express appreciation to our students, staff, board, community members, civic organizations, and local business community for coming together in so many different ways to ensure that we were able to continue to provide academic programming and a nutritional program for our students. Despite all that COVID-19 did to disrupt all of our lives, our students, staff, and community as a whole consistently acted in a kind, compassionate, generous, and caring manner to support our students, schools, and community, and each other, most importantly, during this most difficult of times. We are all truly fortunate to live and work in such a wonderful community as Ellsworth. And I take great pride in having the opportunity to have the job that I have. Along the lines of COVID changing so many things, and we've talked a lot about the end-of-year ceremonies and activities for our students. But one of the activities that's not going to happen in person is the opportunity for us to recognize our retiring staff members in front of all of their peers. So I do have three that I would like to speak briefly about tonight. One is Charlie Pierpont, who has been the E, Elsworth School Department Maintenance Supervisor. Charlie has been a fixture in the Elsworth School Department Facilities and Maintenance Department for years. He has always been dependable, reliable, conscientious, and very competent. Charlie did quarterly work and he did it with pride, caring. And if you know him, he did it with a sense of humor. As good as the employee as Charlie is and was, he is an even better person, like to wish Charlie best wishes in his retirement. Also retiring, and it doesn't seem possible, Brian Higgins, who's been physical education teacher and health teacher for the past 46 years. Not only has Brian served in that capacity, but he has also coached soccer, basketball, and was the first tennis coach that Ellsworth High School ever had over his 46 years in Ellsworth. And many of us had him as a teacher and as a coach. He provided all of us with wonderful opportunities, not just in the classroom, but also in the athletic arena. And Brian has touched many, many lives positively. So Brian, best wishes to you as you move off into your retirement. And even though she's only been here two and a half years, I'm going to try to get through this, Mrs. Lewis. You might have wondered why I didn't say anything a bit earlier when you were speaking. Well, now you know. So Kathy has been with us for the past two and a half years. And it's difficult to add to what she said in her comments and what many of you also said as a follow-up, but it's all true. Now, it is true that I worked for years since coming back to Ellsworth to convince Kathy Lewis to come and work in the Ellsworth School Department. After all, what many of you don't know is that she worked for every other superintendent in Hancock County after she retired. But she always turned down the opportunity to come to Ellsworth. Well, lo and behold, two and a half years ago, for whatever reason, I don't know if it was because she was tired of my incessant begging, but Kathy decided that she would come and spend the remainder of that first year with us. What happened since then, I think Kathy found out that this is what she had been missing all of those years of working in other places in Hancock County. She touched all those students and other... She touched all those students and other places and touched them very well and very positively. But when she came to Ellsworth, she found out that this is a great school system. This is a great community. We have a great staff, and we're all about kids. Her love and caring for children was exhibited in her every word and every action. Her impact on the school department and the children she serves is immeasurable and will be one of her many legacies. And leave it to Kathy to give her final board report tonight in a manner that provided a lesson to every single one of us. Kathy must think that we're your children as well. So Kathy, I want to thank you very much for finally giving in and accepting my requests to come and work in Ellsworth. I will be forever grateful to you for doing that because of what you did for this school department and this community, and so will the children you serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. That's, I appreciate that very much. But all life is about the right things happening at the right time, and certainly, I was blessed to be able to come to Ellsworth. And after I got done talking, and it isn't very often, especially for as long as I talk, that I would think of something else. But I also wanted to be sure to thank this school board, because the kind of support and the kind of questions that you ask, the kind of ideas that you help us create, make a great deal of difference. I have been blessed for, since nineteen seventy-one, with the ability to work with kids and follow my passion, and it has been absolutely amazing. But I don't want it to be left unsaid, that the support that you have given me and the climate that you help create by the ways that you support us as administrators is a huge factor in the success of Ellsworth. And I'm not going to go on, but I just wanted to say thank you to this school board, each and every one of you, because it's been amazing. And I do have one other thing that I hope will show up. I talked about children. I mean, I love it. They write you notes. They tell you how much they care. They also tell you when they think you should be doing something else. I think we should have all-day recess, Mrs. Lewis. I hope you are hearing me. But a few years back, a few schools back, I had, I've had so many incredible teachers, people who are committed and passionate and feel the same way that I do, that our whole lives are about increasing the happiness factor and the learning factor for kids' lives, everyone that we touch. But I had an incredible teacher who gave me this, and I want to see if I can get it up here for you. And there are a series of crayons, and it said, and this, I think, is pertinent to what's happening for me in this retirement. Every story has an end, but in life, every ending is just a new beginning. It couldn't be said any better. But thank you for the privilege of being able to work with the Ellsworth School Department and for each and every one of you as individuals. I appreciate it more than you know. Okay, and now I'm not going to say anymore. Thank you, except Erica, I owe you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your report, Mr. Higgins. Item H, committee reports. I think a lot of the committees that have met in the last couple of weeks are going to be reporting during different times later on in the meeting. Under all business, I'm going to ask Mr. Marcosian, do you have any comments that you, that we've received or questions?
Yes, I have one question. So this is from Tiffany Jalane, and it's about, well, I'll just read it. She understands, says, I understand the focus is on the seniors, as it should be. For those of us who have underclassmen, will they be receiving certificates and pins in the mail? You know, the student council participation and honor roll and so forth like that was organized. In years past, it was a school organized award ceremony, but with everything going on, that didn't happen. Hoping that at some point, these things will happen, even if he isn't acknowledged, her son. Thank you. I am so impressed with all the, with all of you, and appreciate the hard work done by all of you. So I guess that would be a question for Mr. Clifford.
Sure. Yeah, I can answer that. And what we've decided to do is eventually, when we are all physically in our school, then we're going to have the underclassmen awards. You know, so hopefully, it'll be in September, but if not, it'll be whenever we get back to school. And that is usually the last day of the regular school day. For grades nine through eleven, we have an underclassmen ceremony, and that's what she's talking about. And so we'll have that assembly when we get back to school, everybody physically.
Thank you.
And that's all I have so far, Brenda.
Okay, thank you. Under new business, J one, consideration of teacher nomination.
Yes, for the board's consideration, I'm very pleased to make the following nomination this evening of Tara Mason to become the new point-five FTE Hospitality and Tourism Instructor at Hancock County Technical Center. And Tara, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe you are a nineteen ninety-five graduate of Ellsworth High School. Did I get the year right? Mrs. Mason is being-
I had to figure out how to unmute, unmute, ninety-six.
Ninety-six, okay, I was close. Mrs. Mason is being recommended by the building-level hiring committee, based upon her background and experience in the hospitality and tourism industry, her recent work at HCTC as an ed tech in all of our programs, and a very strong interview. In addition to her industry-related work, Tara has developed a strong rapport with HCTC staff, students, and programs through her work as the school-wide ed tech queen. She has earned the respect of students and staff at the school. And through her interview process and with her background, she has a vision, energy, and enthusiasm to not only help create the new program, but develop it into a very strong program and make it both successful and beneficial, not only to our school, but to our community and to our region. As I said, she's a nineteen ninety-six graduate of Ellsworth High School. Committee believes that she will make a very smooth transition and successful transition from her current role into the new position, as do I, and believes that even though she's not a new person to the staff, she will be an excellent addition to the HCTC faculty. So I am pleased to nominate for the board for a first-year probationary contract. Tara Mason is point-five of HCTC Hospitality and Tourism.
I move that we accept the superintendent's nomination of Tara Mason as a first-year great teacher for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abigail Miller?
Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Marcosian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's five oh. Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. Item J two, discussion and consideration of authorizing superintendent or personnel committee to act on behalf of the school board in confirming teacher nominations and appointing administrative staff in the months of June, July, and August.
If I may, Mrs. Thomas, this is an action that the board has taken over the past several years. As you know, entering the summer months with vacancies, sometimes it's a challenge to work through the screening and interview process and bring a candidate back to the school board. Sometimes the timing doesn't work. You know, for example, if we had a candidate we wanted to bring at the end of this week, we'd be looking at the next board meeting, most likely. So what this action would do is authorize either myself or the personnel committee to act on the board's behalf in confirming any teacher nominations or an appointing administrative staff in the months of June, July, and August. So that is the request and the recommendation, and we'd certainly welcome the board's consideration.
Make a motion to authorize the superintendent or personnel committee to act on behalf of the school board in confirming teacher nominations and administrative staffs in the months of June, July, and August.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Discussion. Hearing none. Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abigail Miller?
No.
Paul, sorry, Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Marcosian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Five oh. Item three, discussion and consideration of approval of a propane bus bid.
And this is one of those items that you mentioned earlier, Mrs. Thomas, where two of our committees met. Facilities and Transportation met to discuss the bid proposals and make a recommendation to the board. And the Finance Committee met to talk about the financing component of that. And I would open this by deferring to the chairs of those committees to speak. And if you would prefer that I do that, I'd be happy to do it as well.
So basically, what this is about is the settlement from Volkswagen. This is giving our particular district and other around the country an opportunity to take a bus that is still viable to transport students, but at the end of its life, off the road and replace it with something that is much more environmentally friendly. This is going to give us such a large portion of the money to buy this bus that it is, it's something like two-point-two-five percent of return of our money by, our investment, by accepting this money and coming up with the difference in what it costs to have the bus meet the standards in which main needs to operate, the cameras, other things besides just the engine and whatnot. It's, it's one of the most fiscally responsible purchases, you know, of any motor vehicle in this town this year. And I highly recommend that we do this.
Thank you. With regard to, with regard to the buses, just a little bit more background, and I concur with everything that Mrs. Miller said. Through the process, we submitted bids through the grant program and received two bids. One was from O'Connor's in Augusta, and one was from Cressy. As we moved through the process, the initial recommendation from Mr. Saunders was to go with the O'Connor bus, which was the higher-priced bus. He was making that recommendation based upon the fact that the propane bus we purchased last year was the same model. We had good experience with it. And also because we had had some problems with the model, not propane bus, but with the model that was coming from the other company several years back, warranty issues. However, as we moved through the budget process and we reached the decision to come forth with a budget that did not increase the local assessment to taxpayers to support schools, I talked with Mr. Saunders and decided that the recommendation would be to come forth with the low bid. So the low bid, and as Mrs. Miller said, we're talking about a bus that's close to a low bid of ninety-five thousand dollars, which we would receive a seventy-eight thousand dollar grant payment from Volkswagen Settlement. And we included approximately sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars in the budget that you approved as a board. When Mr. Saunders notified the vendors with bid that we were going to take, he was told by the vendor who provided the bid for the higher-priced bus that the other bus did not meet the specifications for the grant. We did follow up with staff in Augusta, who administer the grant program, and found out that that was indeed accurate. And the difference is with the nitrogen oxide emissions, it needed to be a point-zero-two factor, not a point-two factor. The bus that was the low bid had the point-two factor, not the point-zero-two. So we were left with a situation where if we wanted to access the grant funding to purchase a new bus with seventy-eight thousand dollars in support and an environmentally friendly bus, which is very much supported by our board and by our community, we would need to look at how we could come up with additional funding. So we went to the Finance, excuse me, Facilities and Transportation Committee and discussed this issue and recommended going with a higher-priced bus. And what that would be is a bus that has a value of a hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars, for which we would receive seventy-eight thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. And we have a district responsibility of thirty thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, which is about thirteen thousand six hundred dollars above what was in the budget. The Facilities Transportation Committee is recommending, the action they took in their standing committee meeting that evening, is recommending that we move forward with that bid and defer the conversation on funding to the Finance Committee. Meeting with the Finance Committee, what we looked at is, even though we will be looking to find an additional thirteen thousand five hundred dollars in our budget, it's analogous to a situation where we are looking to fill teaching vacancies. When we budget for a teaching vacancy, we submit a budget that includes a salary at a specific level, the budget for Masters twelve, and we budget for a specific health insurance program, because we don't know at that time what experience level the teacher we end up hiring is going to have. Sometimes they come in and they are at the base of the scale with a single subscriber health insurance package, in which case we will find out we have more money in the budget than necessary. Other times, the top candidate may be someone who's at the top of the scale with a full family package. In that case, we didn't budget enough. This is the situation here. We're not aware of the difference in specifications until after our budget was approved. So the recommendation to the Finance Committee was that we move forward with the purchases recommended by Facilities and Transportation and purchase the bus out of the existing budget and monitor the budget over the course of the year to realize any savings to pay for the difference in cost. So with that explanation, we have a recommendation by the Finance, excuse me, the Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Marcosian and Mrs. Miller, to accept and approve the bid for the O'Connor bus. And the Finance Committee agreed, that's Mrs. Thomas and Mr. Hudson, to move forward with the purchase out of the existing budget. So what we're looking for is a motion to approve the propane bus bid as presented and recommended by the Transportation and Facilities Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the propane bus bid as presented and recommended by the Transportation and Facilities Committee.
Second.
Mrs. Thomas, you're muted.
Mrs. Thomas, you're muted.
Sorry. Discussion.
I just wanted to add to, between those two bids, I think it's good to, because we have two different locations, O'Connor GMC being a lot closer for warranty and Cressy, which I think is out of Kennebunkport. And in my business, we've also had issues with Cressy too. So I'm happy that the O'Connor bid can go through and we can move forward, because I think that'll be a smarter move for the school department.
So I think we're ready to vote. Ms. Alexander?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Abby Miller?
Yes.
Bob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Marcosian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's five oh.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Discussion and consideration of amendment to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Ellsworth School Department's school calendar.
While on the, on the face of this, this seems like an odd time to ask for an amendment, but if you think back to when the board approved our remote learning plan submission to the Department of Education, one of the things that we discussed was the potential for moving some of the final teacher days from the month of June into the month of August under the premise that, as we move forward with planning for the start of the school year in September, we're going to have much more information in the month of August than we have now. You know, as we're going to talk about in a few minutes, there are more questions right now than there are answers to what September is going to look like. So our administrators have spent some time talking with their teachers about their thoughts on whether moving the days from June until August was a good idea. And we have a fairly strong amount of support from our teaching staff. I have reached out to the Ellsworth Education Association President for the meet and consult piece. Believe the association is supportive of the move, but the questions they have are in regards to scheduling. So what we're looking at is, maybe go back a step, the other piece- So what we're looking at is, let me go back to, the other piece is looking at the final teacher days from this Monday until June 18th. Will our teachers and administrators be able to complete the tasks that they need to complete to successfully finish this school year? Our administrators have assured me that yes, that is the case, and there is support for moving two days from now into August. So what I'm asking for is the board to authorize me to move two days, June 17th and June 18th, teacher workdays into the month of August. I don't have a date to recommend to place those days, because I need for our principals and directors to need to have an opportunity to work with their teachers to schedule those days. You know, many of our teachers, even though they know that there's been a conversation, they have plans for the summer months, they have other obligations, we want to make sure that we can take the most advantage of those two days in August. So that, that's the reason for the motion and the way that it is worded.
Make a motion to authorize the superintendent to move two days from June 2020 to August 2020.
I second that motion.
Discussion? Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Abby Miller?
Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Markosian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Five oh. Item five, negotiations update. Paul or Rob, do you have a negotiations update or Dan?
No, no update at this time, Brenda. Negotiations still ongoing with the teachers.
All right. Thank you. Okay, item six would be update for planning for the start of the September 2020 school year.
Again, I want to preface, preface my comments with the statement again that at this point in time, there are many more questions than there are answers. But do, do want to let members of our public know and our parents know that we have not yet received guidance from the main Department of Education regarding the start of the 2020, 21 school year in September. With that being said, we all remain optimistic that we will physically return to school in September of 2020. And as you heard Mr. Clifford talk about with one of the questions on his report, you know, they're hoping to do the ceremony for underclassmen when we're all back in school in September. And again, I think we need to remain optimistic that that's where we're going to be. However, it's also important to know that with the most recent guidelines that were issued that we received for in-person summer programming that are aligned with state law and applicable executive orders, and they included things that continue to limit gatherings of no more than 50 people, recommended student-teacher ratios of 10 to 1, pre-entry screening processes, requiring maintenance of the six-foot distancing rule, requiring students and staff to wear masks, social distancing on buses, and many other factors. With those pieces in place, we decided that we could not operate an in-school, in-house, summer instructional program. We're hoping that the guidance will be less restrictive as this virus continues to move in the direction we all hope it's moving. But again, there are many more questions than answers. Now, while we're planning and spending our time planning with looking at being back in school physically, we're also including in our planning protocols options for continuation of remote learning. Again, that's the last option, in my opinion. A hybrid instructional model, which might include a combination of in-school learning and remote learning that could take any number of forms, for example, certain grade levels being in-school physically, certain grade levels doing remote learning, or structured schedules where you have some students in the building early in the day, some students in the building later in the day, or you alternate days with students. And again, those are all potential examples. So planning for each of these options includes the same number of variables to consider as we would if we're planning on a full opening in September. So just to report what has been taking place thus far, Hancock County superintendents have been meeting weekly for the past three months. And over the past several weeks, in anticipation of receipt of the guidance in the Department of Education, we're talking about options of what the fall may look like, and we're all approaching it with the hope of being back in school physically. As I stated previously in these meetings, Hancock County superintendents have historically worked in collaboration regarding scheduling and our other initiatives as we share students through tuition arrangements, and we also have students from all of these other communities that attend HCTC. We also anticipate that there may be a regional component to the Department of Education's guidance. Certainly, if you look at the way the virus is performing or acting in Hancock County and compare that to Cumberland County or York County, there's a vast difference. So what may be applicable and necessary in York or Cumberland County may not be applicable in Hancock County. The superintendents will continue to work on that in the hopes that we can move forward in a manner that's as consistent as possible. School department's leadership team, which includes your principals and directors, not just the academic components, but includes special ed, includes facilities, includes transportation. We have also been in anticipation of the release of the Department of Ed's guidance, started talking about preliminary planning of major areas of importance into our weekly meetings. And we've been meeting weekly for the past several months. At this point, we're considering the following major areas in this work to guide us in determining what needs to be in place to support a physical return to school in the fall. We're looking at the health and science benchmarks related to the virus. And again, we all know that these may change on a daily basis. We don't know which direction. We certainly hope it's going to continue to remain flat as it appears to be in Hancock County, and that would be the best for all of us. But we'll be looking at CDC recommendations and looking to answer the question, when will the science-based benchmarks and safety markers determine it's safe to return to school? We're looking at other health and safety considerations. Will we have students or staff who may not be able to be in the facilities for health and safety-related reasons? You know, for example, we have some staff members who fall into the risk categories, and we've been talking about that since we've had schools closed. Those people may not be able to be in the school, or students who are immunocompromised who may not be able to be in the school. How are those types of situations going to impact our ability to have all of our students and staff in the schools? We're also looking, as I mentioned earlier, what are the daily screening protocols that we're going to need to have for students and staff to enter school? You know, when talking with our school nurses yesterday, you know, one of the things that happens is we always want parents to take a look at their children before they leave home in the morning. If you don't feel well or if you have a fever, we want you to have your children stay home. So that will be part of the process, but in the guidance that we received for the summer, there were processes whereby we would be expected to take the temperature of students who come to school or staff members who come to school, to ask them several questions about how they're feeling and so forth, and determine if they can be there for the day. Those are considerations under health and safety. This was already there before COVID arrived, but we've seen a definite increase in mental and emotional health in many of our students. Our staff does an excellent job in working to support those students and provide access to supports. Enter COVID, and you find that those are increasing even more. So we're looking at what do we need to have in place to support our students and our staff? Because again, COVID has had an impact not just on students, but on staff and families as well. Are there necessary supports either in place or accessible? Facilities is another major category. We need to make sure that our staff, and Trumbull has been working on this, procuring the necessary supplies, equipment, and materials to support the health and safety guidelines and cleaning and disinfecting our schools and the high-frequency touch areas. Also, in preparing classrooms in common areas to comply with the health and safety guidelines. For example, if we're looking at having desks in our classrooms spaced six feet apart or tables spaced six feet apart, what is the number of students we're going to be having, be able to have in those classrooms at any one point in time? Our staff will have to look at marking six-foot spaces in certain areas of the school, directional areas, signage that will need to be put up into the schools. And those are only a few of the pieces with our facilities. Personal protective equipment. Again, procurement of necessary PPE to meet health and safety guidelines. What we can tell you so far is the Department of Education has calculated the number of students and staff in our schools expected for the state of Maine for next year and has worked with vendors to get bids and place an order for variety of PPE. Face coverings, masks, face shields, gowns, gloves, hand sanitizer, and others. They, it is my understanding, they placed an order this week to have all those pieces of PPE for all students and staff in the state of Maine. And certainly, we hope that that's going to come through. We expect that it will. But many school departments, ours included, have been proactive in starting to acquire some of these pieces of equipment. Our athletic director, Josh Frost, has come into an opportunity through our trainer to get 16 of the forehead thermometers that depending upon what we do with summer activities outside this year, may be an opportunity to use those as a trial run. We have also ordered through the Southern Maine Administrative Partnership, and this is a group of Southern Maine school departments that have banded together to place an order for masks, face shields, and clear masks. Now, these are, these are face coverings and masks that have a clear piece on it so you can see someone when they're talking. And depending upon some of your students, that can be an important thing. So that is a significant piece of information that we need to have. Will we be able to have enough PPE to meet the health and safety guidelines in our schools for students and staff? Then, then comes the other piece. What are the expectations and requirements for students and staff to wear and utilize those pieces? You know, what we've been doing in our school department thus far, when we have staff coming into the building, the expectation is you'll be wearing a mask when you're in common areas. If you go into your own office to work or your own classroom, you can take it off. But those will be questions that we have to answer moving forward for what it's going to look like in the fall. Transportation, as Mrs. Thomas mentioned earlier in the evening, is another significant area. Now, if you look at a typical school bus, which carries 77 students, and you look at the summer guidance that we were provided that says you need to alternate seating for students by seat, that's front to back, every other seat, and across the aisle. So for example, if you start a student sitting in the driver's side backseat, the next student will sit on the opposite side, the next seat up. The next student will sit on the driver's side, the next seat up. Certainly, the students on these opposite sides of the aisles are six feet apart. Students from seat to seat are not six feet apart, but they're expected to wear face masks. If you fill a bus with those alternating pieces, you will not have 77 students on a bus. You'll be closer to 20 to 23. So the things that we're looking at is what number of bus runs are we going to need to transport students to accommodate schedules and having them in the building or taking them home? Also, you have, as we do with facilities, the frequency of cleaning, disinfecting, and the equipment necessary to do that. We're fortunate because we have one bus fogger at this time that Mr. Saunders and his staff have been using that does a wonderful job. Scheduling is another area that we're looking at. The calendar that was approved by the school board calls for a start of school on August 31st. We will probably need to look at that because the executive order that's in place has guidelines in place that carry through the month of August. So it may be that September 1 is the best day to start, because the executive order requirements may change after the month of August. The other piece has been discussed by many school departments and is one that we have on the table. And again, these are all things that we have to consider, is do we look at a delayed opening to provide additional time for our staff to be fully prepared and participate in any PD that's identified over the summer that we need, whether that be remote learning, a hybrid program, or in-school learning with different requirements? That may be an option we want to consider. And again, that would require a waiver from the Department of Education in Augusta. With regard to instruction, we've already mentioned three general categories of what it may look like. In-school, in-person, which was what we did up until early March this past year, which is what we all want to do. And I want to reiterate, that's, that's what we all want to do. There is also the possibility of remote learning and also the possibility of a hybrid or a combination of those factors. And again, there are a lot of variables there. Another piece that we're looking at is staffing. When you look at the types of requirements that we may have, will we need additional staffing to support those pieces? So I'll go back and use the screening for students and staff coming in. If we bring everybody back at Ellsworth High School, you've got nearly 500 students. You've got 850 to 900 students at EEMS. You've got for the morning or the afternoon session, between 100 and 140 students at HCTC. What type of staffing requirements are going to be necessary to do a screening of each and every one of the students and staff as they enter the building in the morning? Will that result in the need for alternative schedules? Now, that, that's, that's a fairly extensive list of major categories and some of the factors under each of them. But I can assure you, every time that the superintendents meet and every time that our leadership team meets, we find that more and more questions emerge. And again, we're awaiting the guidance in the Department of Ed. We're looking at some models that have been begun to be prepared in other states to help guide us. So the other thing, and Mrs. Corbin Ramos mentioned this earlier, we are working on the creation of surveys for students, staff, and parents regarding experiences of remote learning this spring, but also perspectives regarding the fall of 2020. You know, the plan is to hopefully distribute those surveys, surveys early next week. I think we're in pretty good shape with regard to the staff and the student piece. But with regard to the parent piece, we're looking at having additional questions as to what the fall may look like. And just to give an example, I know that in conversations with some of my colleagues, we have had some parents who have called and said, I'm ready to have my kids come back in September. Things are going to be fine. I think things are going to be good with the virus. All the way to the other extreme of people saying, I'm not sure I want to send my children back until there's a vaccine. What we want to do with these surveys is, yes, get feedback on what the remote learning experience was. As Kathy Lewis said, we're not always perfect, but we do our best. We want that information so that if there is going to be remote learning at all in the fall or anytime thereafter, we can make sure that we've addressed the challenges and concerns, so they're no longer challenges and concerns. But we also want to get an idea of what parents think. Will they be comfortable sending their children on a school bus? Will they be comfortable sending their children back with certain parameters in place, like a screening or with alternate schedules? We want to have that information available to us so that as we spend the next four to six weeks trying to develop a plan for what September is going to look like, we get the parental input as well, because that's going to be critical. We didn't have time to do that back in the spring because it was an emergency. This is more like a planned emergency. So we encourage all families, when you get the survey, we're going to be trying to send them electronically through Google Forms so we can have them submitted electronically. But we know that not everybody has access to that. So we want to make them available through other means. It could be through email. It could be through the Infinite Campus system. As Mrs. Corbin Ramos mentioned, if we can't get them to you that way, we will mail them to you or deliver them to you. But we hope you will complete them as soon as you're able, once you receive them, so that we can have the information to aid us in our planning. I think the other thing that needs to happen, and it's already started, all board agendas will include this topic at each of the next several meetings and workshops. And we may want to schedule an additional workshop, workshop session or sessions as necessary or as information becomes available to forward our planning. I think in this case, it's critical that we try to get as much information as possible as we know it. And again, we want to make sure it's accurate information to put out so that our families can plan. It's a challenging time for everybody, but I think we need to do the best that we can to ensure the information is out there in as timely a manner as possible so families can plan. The other piece that's happening, starting this morning, members of our local emergency management plan team, and that's the team that is tasked with reviewing our emergency management plan every year. Now, many of those people are attending, myself included, are attending a virtual eight-week emergency management planning workshop provided by the Readiness and Emergency Management for Schools Technical Assistance Center. This is part of the main school safety center program and ties directly into our district emergency management plan and will be an aid to our planning for September. So all of those things are happening right now. So over the next several weeks, we will continue to monitor updated executive orders, emergent guidance, health and virus benchmarks and metrics, and guidance from the DOE to develop a framework by which we can hopefully begin the school year safely for our students and staff. One of the questions that weighs in the minds of many of our families is, when will we know for certain if our children will be physically back in school in September? At this time, the best answer for that question is as soon as we have adequate information to make that determination. At this time, we do not have that information. And my goal is to have a framework ready and available to provide to families by the end of July to help them in their planning. Hopefully, it's sooner than that, but there's a lot of work to be done over the next four to six weeks to get us to that point. Again, I want to reiterate, the plan is to have a physical return to school and activities beginning in September, and that's the primary component of our planning. But please know that there are so many things going on in addition to a virus that we still don't know as much about as we need to, that we need to be prepared for the possibility that there will be remote learning or hybrid instructional model. that we need to be prepared for the possibility that there will be remote learning or hybrid instructional model. Appreciate your time and let me walk through all that, and I would certainly entertain any questions from members of the board.
What, if any, of your PPE are you having a hard time finding?
At this time, Abby, one of the, one of the things is, in our conversations with the Department of Ed, they've encouraged us to provide any vendors that we're working with to them so that there are not multiple school systems and school districts competing with the same vendors. In our case, when we learned that the department was moving forward in this direction, we have held off on purchasing too much because if the Department of Ed is going to take care of our needs, it would be best for that to happen because they are going to fund. In falling into the deal with the forehead thermometers, we're using CARESAC money to purchase those. And also, I mentioned the Southern Maine Administrative Collaborative. We're using CARESAC money to purchase those as well. And again, I purchased three-hundred-and-fifty face masks, fifty face shields at this time, and a hundred of the clear masks. So at this point in time, that's what we have sought to get. I know Chuck Turnbull is working hard to ensure that he has the necessary cleaning and disinfecting supplies for his staff. So at this point, we're not having trouble finding it, but we're trying to balance what we have for available funds and what we have in terms of what we're going to get from the Department of Education.
Well, as you know, I work very closely with the masks in this town. And if the school needs to put in a request, we make our masks for free. And we, we actually have Abby Morrow with the library who's looking for a grant. So it would probably be wise to put in a request for masks. Kids and adults, also, just for everybody out there, I have been getting a lot of people looking for the gowns lately. And there is a pretty easy workaround for the gowns if, if, I, I think they're probably short on, on getting them because they're, they take a lot more material and they're not as quick to make. But for those of you who work in the school, who might be returning back first, you might want to hold on to any of your, maybe your husband's or, you know, men in your family's larger dress shirts. Those can be taken, turned backwards, we cut the neck out, sew it down, sew up the arms right here, add in some, some ties, and we can make gowns that are knee-length that are, you know, up-cycled materials of what you already use. And what's very important is those shirts can go through the process of dry cleaning and being sterilized again for, you know, really relatively inexpensive. So as we're cleaning out closets and other things, we might want to hang on to some of those, particularly if, what works best is if the shirt would be to, would be one or two size bigger than what you would obviously wear yourself. But it's something in which if we needed two-hundred or three-hundred of those, that could be turned around pretty quickly with, with some shirt donations. So.
Actually, I've been glad you mentioned that because one of the things that the commissioner has suggested is that we look to folks in our communities. And again, in, in an earlier part of this meeting, I mentioned the generosity of people in this community to step forward and help out. And she suggested that we look at that type of opportunity where there may be people such as yourself or other people who are doing that. So yes, that's part of the conversation moving forward. Again, one of the pieces is, we're hoping to learn from the Department of Ed also when to expect what they're ordering. But certainly, we will keep you on the list of people to reach out to.
I'm just one of eight. I'm, we have a whole group. I'm, by no means am I doing all of this by myself. But we are here, and we're happy to help, and we do have somebody looking for a grant. So fingers crossed.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And if, if you would like, if you want to send me the, the, the list of all the names, or we could use you as a contact, whatever works.
Oh, yeah, just we have.
For mentioning that, I appreciate it.
A Google Doc.
I do have a couple of comments, okay, Mrs. Thomas? So I was, go ahead. You hit on topics that I had for questions, Dan, so I just wanted to ask a couple of questions with more specifics. When I went through all of this, one of the things that came to mind was wanting to hear from all of our families, all of our admin, staff as well. And in that survey that goes out, it would be really interesting to have a couple of specific questions, like you mentioned, about if we're going to be going to remote learning in the fall, will you be, you know, sending your child or, or, you know, going along with that? And also the flip of that, if we are going to be in, in school and it's going to require the, the PPE and all of those things, is your child going to be comfortable to attend? Because I think it's going to be very important as we go through the summer and all of our planning to kind of get a pulse on what the, what the school look like. Will it have less attendance because we're going to be in person? And would that eliminate some of the concerns of classroom sizes if we're going to be going forward with a smaller school population? So that was one of them, so I'm hoping those are kind of specific questions.
Actually, ma- maybe not with that specific wording, Jen, but yes. The questions that are in, in the model that I'm looking at include that piece, and it's designed to find that information out. So yeah, exactly what you're talking about.
Okay. And then also, as I had mentioned in communication that I had sent this week, and you had put down that all board agendas would be having this topic and that there might be, might opt to schedule additional workshops, which, you know, I'd like to communicate, I think would be really important right now. I think it's important to use, utilize the entire board when we're going through discussions like this because obviously, different committees have certain concerns. And I think if we were doing that, then maybe when teacher nominations came up or staff vacancies needed to be filled, we wouldn't be in a position where we, we would be waiting to the next official meeting. I'd have to assume everybody, I know it's tough in the summertime, but in light of everything that's going on, I think it would be really important to, to meet as often as needed, you know, even if it has to be via Zoom. But it would be nice to resume our in-person meetings, and so I was hoping for an update on that, too.
And I can share with you, I think we would all like to have the in-person meetings, Jen. Zoom has, Zoom has some positives, but the phrase zoomed out, I think is applicable to many of us. Yes. But I, I would just respond to the workshop piece. I, I think we need to schedule them as often as possible. And as to whether you use the standing committees or not, I think much of the information does need to be shared and discussed with the entire board so that people can hear it and see it. But I think we need to be cautious and make sure that we schedule them as we need them. Because if, if we don't have any additional information to provide, I don't want to bring people together. But yes, I think we all need to be prepared to call a workshop. And if you look at our policy, we can call a workshop on relatively short notice. And as you see with our IT department, information can get out to the members of our public when those are going to happen. So thank you.
And then the last thing I had to was, we were talking about the planning, but I hadn't heard any discussion yet on returning equipment. So everyone, we had, we had sent out all the iPads. I'm just curious what that plan is.
I'll, I'll touch on it a little bit, but I know Mrs. Clifford is still on here. We did talk about it at our leadership team, and the plan is, we need to get through summer school. But the plan is to, right now, bring that equipment all back in, clean, disinfect, update the ones that we have to update personally, and then hopefully not have to redistribute in the fall. That's the piece. So in, in general terms, that's what it is, but I see that Mrs. Clifford is now available, so I'm just going to mute myself and turn it over to her. April?
Yeah, so I'm working on a communication currently, trying to get a plan together about how to gather and then gather the ones that are turned in and then put them aside and do that stuff for the different locations. But one of the things we wanted to do is we wanted to ensure that the devices were available for students who needed them over the summer, and that includes students who are participating in the various summer school programs, as well as high school students who are taking early college courses or taking advantage, and some of our seniors who are taking advantage of the free college courses that are provided by May, EMCC, Hassan, Thomas. We wanted to make sure that they still had access. So we're working on that communication now, and hopefully that'll be out, I would say, by midweek.
Okay. So with all of the apps and such that are on there, would the, would the students have access to that all summer, even if they weren't in a program?
Yes, that's the other piece that's kind of stalled the, stalled the communication going out is working out a plan so that if parents wanted to utilize those apps and keep the devices throughout the course of the summer for their child, we wanted to provide them that opportunity. But we also needed, need to have time on our end to be able to make sure the devices are cleaned and sanitized and updated so that we're able to gather that stuff. I mean, the devices have been out for several weeks now, and sometimes when you push updates, especially to the iPads, they need some user intervention. You might not have to click next, 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 so that's difficult to do remotely. We get a lot of phone calls with regard to that. Sometimes kids are putting passcodes on there, and we have to clear passcodes, and we're doing a lot of communication with parents. So we're trying not to push any updates out to devices like that so we don't cause more problems for parents and students. But the goal is really to provide access for students and parents that want to continue that access. And for parents who don't, we want to provide an opportunity to get those in. And in addition, I want to say that we have warranty on all of our devices. So if you end up having a device that has, you know, a cracked case or a screen or an adapter, we're able to, if we can get those in time, we're able to get those sent, sent out and repaired, recharge. So it's really important that if there's any type of damage to your device, that you're getting it to us as soon as possible so that we can take advantage of that warranty. And that warranty does expire in early October.
Okay, super. Thank you very much.
No problem.
I was wondering, when we look at this plan for fall, there are a couple of things that, as a former teacher, I think of. I think of the CDC recommendations for summertime where don't let them use the playground equipment. They can't play with the toys, they've got to be six feet apart. And I look at a child being in school, especially the younger ones, all day long, and I sort of shake my head. And then being a second-grade teacher, and I think of teaching math using manipulatives. And all of that will be off the plate. I'm assuming because you can't sanitize unless we all put plastic gloves on to do, you know. Those, those are little pieces that I look at and how instruction would have to change. That's, that's a lot to be thinking about.
And, and I, I think, and maybe that would, maybe that would encapsulate some of this conversation. You know, as, as I work with the, the groups that I'm working with, and we have these conversations, invariably, Brenda, those types of questions come up. What about this? What about that? What about this? You're absolutely right. You know, the, the playground piece was an important part of the conversation for the summer. You know, kids who've been kept inside for a period of months, all of a sudden, you bring them back into school, and how are you going to keep them off playground? It's a significant challenge. Your comment on the manipulatives is the same. That's why it's so important that guidance that we're going to have, we hopefully have it soon so we can take a look. If those things are still in place, what is it that we can do to make it safe so that parents will be comfortable having their children come back? And that we're comfortable having staff members come back also. Okay, it's, it's a, it's, it's a tall order, but we're, we're up for it.
Any other comments? Mr. Marcosian, do you have a comment, Abby? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. It's okay. Just about what Jen was saying, this, it is important that our committees meet. Your committees and your, you know, school board members are your voice of your community. And we are at a point where everything is changing. We have an obligation to listen to our parents. We listen to our community members and to make decisions on, on not our hearts, but the hearts of those people that we represent. And when it comes to policy, you, you, the policies that are written were not written with this in mind. You can't hold something to a standard in which this was never even discussed before. So anything that has, you know, might have been a policy but was written before any of this happened, before it had any, all these new situations apply, that's null and void. We need to continue to go forward, work with the reality that we have been given. And because summer is upon us and people do things like move houses, move jobs, go, you know, maybe travel, we need to be aware that, we need to be on top of this, getting it done ahead of time and not waiting to the very last second to, well, let's, let's wait and wait and wait, and then convene a committee, well, we need to get school out. We need to have these discussions in advance. We need to have some, many of them with public notice, with participation. And we need to talk about, this is, this is my, this might be how our, our life is for the next six months. God help me, I would not like this for another six days, but this is, this is the job. The job is, we represent the people. The job is, this is, we, we have to write everything over again that pertains to how this affects us.
Mr. Marcosian, I believe you have a question or a comment.
I do, and, but I can also address what Abby just said. The policy, our policies were established six years ago when we first became Ellsworth School Department after we withdrew from the RSU. And we established all the required and recommended policies at that time. And since then, we've added some other additional policies. And then we're required every three years to review all of our policies. So we, in two, twenty-fourteen, we established the policies. In twenty-seventeen, we reviewed and amended some of them, and we reestablished others without amendments. And now it's three years after that, and it's time to start doing that process over again. So that's certainly something that is about to happen imminently. And I believe at our next workshop, which is two weeks from this evening, we're going to be going over all of the committee, all the committees, the subcommittees of the school board, which each of the subcommittees, for those who don't know, consist of two members of the board. That way, they can meet without forming a quorum. If it was three or more, it would be a quorum. So all those committees will be meeting, including the policy committee, obviously. And the policy committee is going to have some, you know, pretty heavy lifting to do because as, 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 as a member of the original policy committee, six years ago, I can tell you that doing these policies, it, it takes a lot of work and attention. Reviewing them three years later was also a lot of work, not quite as much. And it'll be a lot of work, as, as Abby says, there's a lot of new things now, so new things to consider, so. But that is definitely in the works. I'm no longer on the policy committee, but I look forward to hearing what recommend, recommendations come from it. And I know Abby is a member of the policy committee, so very much looking forward to that and ongoing discussions about those as well as other committees. So that was just my take on that. And then, yeah.
I was like, can I just add to that? We're talking about this with calendar and announcements, but that's one of the pieces, is starting in July is when that triennial policy manual review takes place. So there will be regular meetings of that committee starting up in the month of July. So it's, 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 it's right, right in the forefront.
Thanks, Dan. So yeah, Mrs. Thomas, I do have one additional public, public participation piece that came in from Gwen Clark. And she wrote, "Just wanted to thank everyone that worked so hard to get our students through this year. We all should have a new appreciation for teachers, lunch program workers, drivers, and janitors. I hope that next year will be anew, and you are all able to enjoy the summer months relaxing. Thank you again." So this is Clark. Thank you so much for that message. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Moving on, calendars and announcements. The next school board workshop will be Tuesday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, at six PM. And we're going to look into doing it in council chambers, I believe, Mr. Higgins. Am I correct?
Yes, the, as we know. Yes, the, as we know, the change in the month of June that allows gatherings of up to 50 people. The council has started meeting again in chambers. Certainly it limits the ability of people to come in, because only so many can be in there. When you look at our administrators who attend our meetings, that will probably fill it up. So it would have to include that, plus an opportunity for members of the public to be able to participate. Because I, I agree with what many of you said, that's critically important. But if we can do it in council chambers, if that chamber is available, would have members and members of the board, myself and administrators present in chambers, and have either Zoom, Facebook Live, with opportunities to react, excuse me, not react, to question and participate through, through call.
Our next regular school board meeting is July 14th, 2020, at 6:30, which is Election Day. So that will not be able to be held in council chambers.
Well, and, and the, the piece I don't know yet, Brenda, is what the validation referendum is going to look like. I presume there may be opportunities for people to vote at the four wards in person. I have not heard that yet. In the event that it's voting by mail or voting in another format, if council chambers are available, I would recommend that we, to use Jen Alexander's phrase, get back to in-person meetings. But I, I agree with Jen, I think it's important to be able to do that as, as soon as possible. But if not, I would think that we would do the same thing we do with the workshop on June 23rd.
Okay. Thank you.
May I also add, I, I referenced the policy committee, so that's Abby and Jen. I'll be sending something out to you soon about setting up a schedule for doing the policy manual. And typically, the way we do it, we start with section A. And if section A is a small one, we would add section B to it. So we'll go through a section at a time, where we will review, look at any policies that need to be added, and add the lens of, are any of these policies COVID-applicable, or probably the better way to say it is virus-applicable. Because whether, whether it's COVID-19 or something that potentially comes at a later time, certainly that lens has to be added to it. The other committee, and I had a conversation with Mrs. Corbin Ramos this afternoon, the CIA committee, which I think is the same two members. We're talking about a potential change in the assessment calendar at the K through four grade levels that Mrs. Lewis, Mrs. Corbin Ramos, now Mrs. Clifford and the K4 leadership team have been working on, that I think would be a great opportunity to review that with the CIA committee for a report back to the board. And we hope to do that, if you ladies are available sometime in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Without giving you a date, is it possible to do it in the next couple of weeks?
Sure.
Abby?
I'm available up until right after July 4th, like, I'm, I'm available up to about July 6th.
Okay, look, look for an email over the next, the next few days. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Thomas.
Yes. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would like to. Sorry, Abby. This is why I don't like Zoom.
I didn't hear, I'm, I'm sorry.
I didn't catch it. Who, who, who actually did the motion? Abby, you're pointing off the screen on my screen, I can't tell who you're pointing at.
She pointed to me on mine.
Jen, okay.
So we'll take Jen and Abby.
That's right.
Can second in, in a discussion? Hearing none. Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abby Miller?
Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Markozian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Kathy.
Be with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.